Okay, I think we're ready to start. Before we officially get started with the agenda and the session tonight, I have a sincere thank you to all of our board members, and I think our community does also. I don't think people really appreciate the hours that y'all had put in for everything to start our district, and this is National Board Appreciation Week, and so we just want to take this opportunity to say thank you, because it is a...[33.65][33.65][applause] Because you know it is a thankless job. You catch a lot of heat for good and bad decisions, and this is something that we know that you're doing because you care about children, you care about our schools, and I just want to say again, thank you. We are an exceptional school system because of your commitment and all the things that you've done for us. So we have a couple of special things that we'd like to do for you. First, we have a plaque for you, because you are the official, and Natalie, this weekend I talked about, one of the things that is special to me is that I was the first superintendent. You are our first founding Board of Education. That is something special that you can always hang your hat on, that you've done a service for the city of Germantown, so I want to say thank you. So here's a plaque commemorating that y'all are the founding Board of Education.
My name is Matt. Nice to meet you. Can I tell you, baby? Look around, there's a whole lot of pretty ladies, but I'm like you, you shine so bright. Yeah. I was wondering if you and me could spend a minute on the floor up close, feeling lost in it. I won't give up without a fight. I just want you.
Oh, baby.
I just want you to dance with me tonight. So come on.
Oh, baby.
I just want you to dance with me tonight. We're getting sweaty, hot and heavy in the crowd now. Listen up and let your hair go down, down. Go with it, girl. Yeah, just close your eyes. Yeah. Feel the music moving through your body. Looking at you, I can tell you want it. Don't stop, keep going till the morning light. When I saw you there, right there in the dark, acting like you didn't have a care. I knew right there that you'd be mine, that we'd be dancing the whole day and night like ooh.
Oh, baby.
I just want you to dance with me tonight. So come on.
Oh, baby.
I just want you to dance with me tonight. Break it down now. To dance with me tonight.
Ooh. Oh, baby.
I just want you to dance with me tonight. So come on.
Oh, baby.
I just want you to dance with me tonight.[293.02][293.02][applause]
And after tonight's board meeting, we will have refreshments for the school board. We have a cake for y'all, too. But once again, thank you, thank you very much.
On behalf of the board, is this on? On behalf of the board, we appreciate that very much. Those were the fifth measure, and we appreciate them coming out and giving us a little entertainment. So I, at this time, I would like to call the meeting of the Germantown Municipal School Board to order. We are here to do the business of the Board of Education, and at this time, I'd like to hand the microphone over to Mr. Delai for a moment of silence, and he will lead us into the part.
that Ms. Quinn had the lives, on the lives of our family and the lives of so many. I know I won't do it justice in the few minutes I have, but I hope you'll bear with me. Ms. Quinn was truly a remarkable teacher. She was loved by her students, and I know this because I saw it firsthand in my own household, and I know this because of the outpouring that we've seen with her passing. The countless number of cards, notes, thank yous, "We'll miss you, Ms. Quinn," that have been plastered social media, the walls at Farmington, just show how much she was loved. I think she was loved for many reasons, not necessarily because she was an easy teacher. She was not an easy teacher, not necessarily because she was a fun teacher, although she was a fun teacher. I think as I saw what she impacted the students the most was because she gave those students what they needed when they needed it, the love, kindness, and intention that each individual student needed. I know I saw this with one particular student, a student who was very good at math but not very good at reading, a student who it came easy to do math but not to read, and in one particular day in her class, he had come back from his breakout group, and the teacher had told Mrs. Quinn, you know, this particular student said that he didn't want to read the book that the rest of the class was reading. He wasn't going to read the book. He didn't like the book, and he didn't like to read. And you can imagine the horror that this teacher faced with this third grader, and Ms. Quinn said, "Don't worry, I'll take care of it." And she talked to the student, and she said, "Now, now, you know you're going to read this book," right? And only the way that Ms. Quinn could say that. And he said, "Yeah," begrudgingly, because he knew that arguing with Ms. Quinn was futile. But not only did she say, "You're going to read the book," she said, "Not only are you going to read it, but you're going to like it. You're going to enjoy reading." And it was that careful, prodding, gentle push that she gave her students to encourage them to do what they didn't want to do. I know I've seen this student blossom into quite a reader, a child that now enjoys reading, and I think it's all because of Ms. Quinn that he has that love for reading. I think this is just one incident, one example of the many ways in which she touched, I know, hundreds of lives. I saw firsthand how she ran her classroom, the way that she got students interested in learning, loved learning. She embraced technology like no one I've seen. Kids would do PowerPoint presentations and keynote presentations, make videos and podcasts all at a third grade level. She didn't accept excuses. She didn't necessarily ask for permission, but she always did what was right for the kids, and she always knew what those kids needed. I know Ms. Quinn will be greatly missed by her Farmington family and her Germantown family. I want to give our condolences out to her family, her son and her daughter she left behind, and her husband. I know she loved them greatly and shared her love for their family with their students and her other families. So I hope you will join me in a moment of silence where we can remember the impact that Ms. Quinn had on so many lives, and to thank her for all that she's done for us as we honor her. Please join me. Mrs. Quinn, we will miss you greatly. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we come to item number four, the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any recommendations they'd like to remove and add? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we come to a recognition of two members of our Germantown Municipal School Board staff. Mr. Manuel.
Mr. Delai did an excellent job of talking about what Ms. Quinn meant to our Farmington families and to the students and teachers at that school. I think what everyone also understands is that any time you have a loss, there's a period of mourning, and there's a period of adjustment, and those are the challenges that we had compressed in a short period of time. We had teachers who were hurt. We have students who are hurt who have lost their teachers. And so tonight, what I'd like to do is recognize two individuals who really stepped out and helped our district really mend and heal during this time. So Ms. Christie Fontenot and Ms. Ashley Brassfield, if you would please stand. I guess Christie's not here tonight.[806.62][806.62][applause] And you could sit down, Ashley, if you want, I want you to... What they did for us really helped Farmington heal quickly and deal with this tragedy. Ms. Brassfield knew Ms. Quinn, was friends with Ms. Quinn. I think she was a mentor to her, and she stepped right up, and she was in that classroom. She was helping those students deal with their feelings, deal with their emotions, deal with the challenge, and was able to feel in it in the school during that time. Ms. Fontenot helped arrange a grief team to come in and help the teachers and help the students who are having adjustment issues, and without their input and their effort during this time, it would have been hard for those Farmington teachers and those students to get back to work and focus on education. So whenever we have people who do exceptional things in our district, I think it's important for us to recognize that outstanding service. So once again, thank you, Ashley, for the work that you did at Farmington.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we come to the approval of the minutes from the board meeting on December the 15th. I believe those were emailed to us. Were there any additions or corrections? Seeing or hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting on December 15th.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Delai?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we come to the Tennessee Legislature update, and that would be Ms. Williams.
I took some time earlier today to email the board members and the superintendent just a list of all the bills that had been filed, and you may or may not have had time to review that, but just any that were filed that may or may not affect us as a district and that we might want to consider discussing prior to our trip to Nashville in about three weeks. I don't know if you had a time to look over those. There were several listed there. I think there are probably about 15 on the list that were mentioned. What I would like to suggest is that at our next, well, we could certainly do it tonight if everyone's prepared, but at our next work session, maybe put together a priority list of what we might want to discuss. Hopefully, at that time, we'll know who we're meeting with, and we can build some consensus on which ones we want to address and what our position is as a board. If anybody has anything tonight they would like to say or bring up, certainly appropriate, the only, there were a couple that I think may affect our policies. We may have to make some policy adjustments if they're passed, dealing with how you can restrain special ed students, and it talks about whether or not we can revoke licenses of teachers, and they're thinking about making some adjustments there, so we may or may not have to look at some policies. I think the one that I particularly had a question on, and I don't know if Mr. Manuel has had a chance to look at this one, but Senator Gresham is suggesting the Individualized Education Act, which would basically, if a student has an IEP and they're not enrolled, they decide not to be enrolled in a public school and decide to go elsewhere, this fund would be created to give them money to seek out therapies and whatnot elsewhere. And I guess we might need to talk with her, and we may need to look at it a bit more closely. Who fills up that fund? Is that us? Is that the state? Because that could affect our budget and...
That is one that I have serious concerns about, and the reason I do that is that essentially that's another way for it to look like a voucher bill. And essentially, what we're doing is taking funds that would come directly from our district to provide to private schools, other groups. I have no issues with private schools receiving funding for public education. My only caveat is they need to have to play by the same rules. If they are going to take public education money, then they have to take IEP students, special education students, and follow those IEPs. I would ask that if they had a voucher bill that was going to take money from our district, that the people who are receiving that money have to follow the same state tests that we do and be measured along the same guidelines. That's my main concern with vouchers, is that I feel like it's not a fair playing field. Compare us to them, and I think we will be competitive any day, but they have to follow the same rules that we do if they're going to take that funding. So that bill does concern me because it is a hidden voucher bill.
Did anybody else have anything from the list they might want to discuss tonight, or we can certainly continue at the next work session?
I think it's an excellent suggestion at the next work session that we talk about those bills, and I looked at the list, didn't have a lot of time to research and think about it, but as we go to the Hill, which I think will happen immediately after that work session, it'd be a good time to prioritize and then decide which legislative matters are utmost priority. I think that's a good idea.
And certainly, in the next few weeks, some of these may be dropped. They may not come out of committee. It could be withdrawn. Several of these that I clicked on didn't even have a summary yet, so there's just not a lot of information, but these are some that I thought, again, might affect either our policies or our budget, and one, since those are kind of our two responsibilities, I just wanted to bring them to our attention. So if we could maybe put some time on our next work session agenda to just think about who do we want to meet with and what our priorities are, I'd really like to go in kind of, you know, organized and have that planned out.
Natalie, also, I understand that Senator Gresham has repealed her, the bill to get rid of Common Core, so we may need to go talk to her. So, okay, any other discussion? Thank you very much, and now we come to the superintendent's report.
That's the song. Yeah, you can hear me. We've been working diligently, just like always, handling issues that pop up in the district, some big priorities that we're working on. We don't have all the details yet. The actuary has come back with a report to look at our OPEB status, and so we will bring at the next work session our plan going forward on how we need to deal with retiree health benefits. So that'll be one focus for us. We are in the middle of our budget season right now, so all of our departments are diligently working on their budgets, and I'm sure there are parents who are curious about how start times will be addressed, and that's where you'll see it. So at the February work session, that's when we will have a budget presented. What you will see is, just like we did at the one work session where we were talking about budget implications, it'll be in the transportation budget. So depending on the amount of funding or what the board chooses to do with that, that's where you'll hear that conversation. So we'll have it at that February work session, and then we'll be voting for it, or the board will be voting for it at the February business meeting to look at the budget. At this time, I'd like to turn over to each of the heads of the cabinet so they can talk about what they've been doing in their areas.
Good evening. My name's Diane Haddal. For those people in the audience, I'm the chief of staff for the system. What I've been working on the past couple of weeks, some of it has to do with the exit of teachers. Those teachers have decided to retire. We're trying to work with them and let them know through a meeting with Ted Daniels from the TCRS that there is a timeline to get their paperwork submitted to the state so there isn't a gap between their salary and their pension. So we've been trying to identify and through communications, getting them down to our office to lead them through the paperwork process. We're also, I've been involved with Autumn. We went to the OPEB actuary meeting. It was this past Friday, so we're really looking at the fringe benefits policy, not for this year per se, but for the years to follow. That and Jason cited that the budget that I'm working on as well for my staff, the Office of the Principals, and I've sought, I've seeked feedback from the assistant principals and the principals with regards to maybe some succession money to help groom future aspiring principals or vice principals. So that may be one change that you hear about that you didn't know about previously, but I'm seeking feedback from them. I've also sought feedback from them about the lead team, and that's the differentiated pay teachers that we started way back, I think in August, before the school year got up and going, and the feedback's been favorable, and they want to continue on with that model with the stipend to so many teachers. And lastly, with regards to where we are, is we're working on a professional development committee. I think Ms. Fisher's involved with that as the board member, and I'm just now identifying staff members that want to participate, including classified staff members. So we want a broad array of staff members, not just teachers and principals, but also classified people. I am going to probably seek out some support to get two or three business people or people from the community that'd like to serve on that committee as well, so I may be leaning on the PTA for their input. The other thing that's consumed some of my time is labor relations and employee-staff code of ethics and behaviors that you're going to be hearing about more so, especially with our policy. In reviewing our policy, there are some measures that we have to take to make sure that we're ready and prepared, especially if we do need an impartial hearing official to help us with some of these cases that may be forthcoming. So that's what I've been working on. I'm on behalf of what Mr. Delai said. I did, and I want to make sure people get this, and I don't want to overkill it. Mrs. Quinn was a lovely lady and a wonderful teacher, but her husband was someone that I met through this process to help him with paperwork, and I cannot think of a finer gentleman in dealing with him. He's someone that I, you know, I'm kind of a reserved person, but he is such a good person, and you could just tell in talking to him. We did set up a memorial fund, or actually, a bank did. He set it up through his bank. I can't recall the bank why I'm up here, but I think it's posted on our website, and that memorial fund probably has a lot of meaning. Apparently, he's got two wonderful kids that I do not know, but I think they're wonderful kids.
It's Regions, Mr. Haddam.
Thank you. It's Regions Bank. So if you want to make a donation to that fund, please take a look at it. No, sir. I can tell you that the age range of people that can retire if they wanted to, and I'm going to say it's close to 40, right now, the number of people that have come through our office has been four, maybe five, that have actually officially retired. So, good question. Anything else? Thank you.
Well, good evening. Mason Grace, Communications and Instructional Technology Coordinator. The big thing we have going on right now would be our email rollout for students. We actually started the middle school last week, or finished the middle school last week, both of them, and this week, we began the high school. So we're going through all the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students. We're showing, mainly showing the students and the teachers in the English classes how to collaborate with each other using the OneDrive and the email, which would be a great tool, a great step in stone as we move to our one-on-one environment in a few years. We still have, continue to have, great stories in the paper that's coming out. Definitely want to check out the one this weekend about all the municipals, but kind of just the six months we've had and how great it was. They really highlighted our programs, like the expansion of the STEM program, the streams program, and there was a good picture of the Chinese class at Farmington there, too. Wednesday, Local 24 is doing a bit called Cool Kids, so Wednesday at 6:00, make sure to check it out. There's a third grader at Dogwood who won the national chess competition for third graders, so very cool, and he's there playing chess. It's good. So that's it. Thanks.
Chauncey Bland, Student Services. Just a couple of other things that I've been working on the last week or two. Open enrollment, of course, starts tomorrow. It'll be open for about a 10-day window between tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. and it closes February 13th at 4:00 p.m. So we look forward to going through those applications. We met with Rob Taylor last week. We've been talking a lot about Leadership Academy. So though the application is up, and I actually talked to guidance counselors at Houston Middle today to give them some feedback and to give them some information about the Leadership Academy so that we can have students start to apply for that. And to start next year, it'll be for incoming ninth graders, and then we'll build the program from there. We've continued to try to figure out a solution for online registration for parents so that we won't have to have the traditional school registration where you have to stand in line and go to multiple schools, so we're still working on that. Had a WebEx this morning with one group who presented a pretty good proposal, and I have to share that with the cabinet and Mr. Manuel so we can talk about that as well. Last week, Ms. Brassfield and I went to a homeless liaison training in Milan so that we can stay on top of the McKinney-Vento and unaccompanied youth situations that we may have come up in the district. Other than that, budget, working on budget, and hopefully, we can have that hammered out by the end of the week, and that's about it. Any questions?
Open enrollment starts tomorrow and ends. Did you have the end date?
February 13th.
Thank you.
At 4:00 p.m.
And just to clarify, the open enrollment is for people who want to transfer intra-district and inter-district, so those are Germantown residents who want to move between schools that aren't their home school, or non-residents who are interested in coming to our schools.
And if you have, if anyone has any questions about, I'm on a transfer now, do I need to reapply? They do not need to reapply unless they're in the exit year for the school, so 5th grade at Farmington and Dogwood, and 8th grade at Riverdale or Houston, well, Houston Middle if you're a non-resident.
Do you have a lot of ideas on coming out of the district from the other option?
No. Out of district, no.
That's one of the things what we've got to do with administrative work session is once we look at the number of people who are applying, we also have to look at the number of residents. That, those are, that's a moving target.
Yep. We don't, yeah, we don't have a number. We just put it out, commercial appeal and any other way we could get the information out, as we did last year.
The, the challenge with that number two is it's also dependent upon the number of students who apply to be in the Honors Academy and Leadership Academy. So, if, if we have high numbers in those groups, that, that would lower the number of people just with general transfers.
Good evening. Josh Cathy, I'm the chief of operations for the district. One of the big, big projects I've been working on recently, operations is working on putting together all of the contracts that currently exist with the district in a tickler system that shows the contract, who the company is, a brief description of what service the company is providing, what we're paying annually or monthly for the service, and how many years the contract is for. Embarking on that for a few reasons, for budgetary purposes, but also to make sure that we, as departments, are reviewing those contracts and so that we don't have a lapse in coverage in the service that we need. And also, to give kind of reminders or warnings or what have you. For instance, for myself, I know when a contract is coming four, four months, five months away, I need to start gathering quotes and looking at making sure that we're doing things as efficiently as possible in the district. So, that's a big project that we're embarking on. We're hoping that'll help each department in budget planning and in the process so we're getting quotes and we're operating as efficiently as possible. I've also been working on capital improvement projects, several different ones, been meeting with architects and engineers. And every day, I learn something new. For example, as you know, we're, we, the project that we got approved for was the Farmington Window Project to replace exterior windows at Farmington. Today, I was there visiting with an architect and he, we have fixed versus operational windows there. The middle window on each classroom is an operational window that can be opened or closed. And we were planning on putting out an RFP that had all windows fixed so that they could not open or close. As we looked around, we noticed, as we should have noticed a long time ago, there's no sprinkler system there. And those, those windows have to be operable as a second egress. So, every day, I learn something new. And every day, we work towards getting that RFP out, but it's still in the process. We're also working on some other RFPs for some other capital improvements for the district. That's just one example. And those are the big items. I'm working on budget as everyone else is, and continuing to schedule meetings with groups that are providing services with us to make sure that they're providing the best level of service possible. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening. John Pierce, information and technology coordinator. Some of the big projects I've been working on, obviously, budget for next year, same as everyone else. I've also begun working with Mr. Cathy on addressing some cooling needs for our data networking closets in many of the schools. As we move to start building towards a one-to-one environment, this is a, an area that we're going to need to address. Those closets were not built with cooling in mind. And as you may remember, I know heat is the enemy of electronics and computer technology. So, we're going to need to formulate a plan to address that at some point. And also, we, we also enable a feature with Microsoft to allow all of our faculty and staff members to download five copies of Microsoft Office. This was a feature that the students had, and Microsoft has just enabled that to provide that to us for free so that, like I said, all the, each faculty and staff member can download five copies up to any device that they choose. So, any questions? Thank you.
Hello. I'm Autumn Enix in the finance department. This past month, most of you have already read that we, Dan and I have been working with the OPEB actuaries. They presented some options to us. They were singular options. So, we are going to sit down together and create a plan that meshes some of the singular options that they have presented to kind of tier off our OPEB so that it best benefits our teachers who have put in all their time and service. They don't lose the benefits that they have earned over all these years. And, but it also provides over time a savings for the district and for the employee. I've also been working on the budget calendar. You've heard budget mentioned by every department here already. That is obviously our focus at this point in time. I should have the calendar out and published by the end of this week. I've recently got in touch with the city and they were able to tie down some dates for me for their approval of our budget for this year. So, W2s, it's January. It's the time of year when everyone's looking for their W2s. We've been a little crazy, both human resources and myself. But W2s will be printed for all of our district employees first thing in the morning. 1099s will go out a little bit later this week. We're still trying to fine tune those. The cabinet will be meeting on February 2nd to discuss the preliminary budget, just so that you guys know, want to let you be aware that we are that far along in our budget preparations. All of you should have received the financial statements for the second quarter through the month of December. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer those. I may have to go look it up and get back to you, but... Linda, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Autumn.
Mm-hmm.
I just had a question. I think you had mentioned this, but generally speaking, as we look at the column, there's a year-to-date budget and expended.
Mm-hmm.
So, at December 31st, we are approximately halfway through our fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
So, just as a guide, and I realize this is imperfect, you would expect that if we're less than 50% of what's expended, we're probably doing better than budget. If we're more than 50% expended, we're probably doing worse than budget, understanding that not all expenses are evenly spaced throughout the year.
Yes. That's it. Overall, yes, but there are, like you mentioned, there are some things that...
I understand, like you and I talked about equipment. At the beginning of the year, we may spend more equipment at the front half of the year because of getting it ready for school than we would at the back half. But it's probably a good guide to see where we are overall.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the teachers' salaries. We began paying teachers' salaries in August.
Mm-hmm.
So, we've had five months of paying teachers' salaries. So, I think 42%, for some categories, you're, you're looking at 42% means you're on budget. So, when you look at regular instruction and the salaries in regular instruction and you see that we're 42% of budget, we're right on track. We're not way ahead in that category. Now, there's some other categories where if you're under 50, you'd be ahead of budget. But our spending's not uniformly spread through the fiscal year, I don't think.
This year will be a unique year because it will only be a 12-month year for the teachers' salaries, or 11-month, 12-month year, but 11-month payment for the teachers.
So, it is, normally, at the end of December, you would be at 50%.
This will be our unique year.
This year's different because the last paycheck will be in next fiscal year.
No, it's because of the start month. Instead of starting the teacher's pay in July...
Right. So, we only pay 11, 11 months. Okay. Well, good. I'm glad I...
Just a month off.
And while I've got the mic, my wife worked in financial reporting most of her career. I've got some secondhand experience with what it's like to close the books. So, I want to tip my hat and commend you on producing these prior to the board meeting. I know it's difficult to get the books closed. So, I think it's a great job by our, our extensive finance staff.
Thank you. All two of us. Autumn, I had a quick question. Sure. Right off the top of my head, I do not, but I do have it. I can get it to you here shortly. But we will have to present it to their financial advisory committee first. I believe that is in April. You have it?
April 14th.
There we go. April. You're welcome. I did want to point out just a couple of thing on the, things on the financial statements. Everybody's with this year, with the self-insurance fund, that was a big thing on the front end. You'll look and see that year-to-date, we have a reserve of just under $1 million, which looks really good. But keep in mind, our insurance fund started September 1st. So, it will go through, this has to carry us through August 31st of next year. And there's always a lag with insurance from the time service is rendered to the time the claim is actually paid. So, on average, we always take it out three months for a lag. The lag decreases from month one, month two, and to month three. So, you're, you're looking at about a month and a half to two months on average in full claims. December was our first full month of medical claims. So, you can look and see it's about $200,000 a month roughly for our claims. So, we'll carry that out about twice. That's what we're actually looking at in claims that are probably out there doing payable that will come out of the, the balance. So, just want you to kind of keep that in mind as you're looking at it. It's not extra money entirely. But we did build our insurance fund to where it would build up about a hundred, a $500,000 reserve in the event we had some major catastrophes that occurred with our employees. So, I did just want to mention that. Any other questions?
Good evening. I just want to say, um, thank you so much for being a part of the Germantown Municipal School Board and in this week being School Board Appreciation Week. I know it's a tireless job, and I know it's a thankless job, and we do appreciate what you do every day. For me this week, or I guess the last two weeks, I've had several different committees, meetings, one being the course alignment committee meeting, and that was with the middle school and the high schools so that we can look at how our courses are carrying over from one transition to the next. It was a very productive meeting and very excited with what's going to be brought forth out of that. We also have conducted a gifted meeting. We're looking at how we're serving our gifted students at all of our schools. We've broken out into two subcommittees, one being an elementary subcommittee and one being a middle school subcommittee. And that work will continue through, through February and probably into March. The final committee is the calendar committee. And tonight, I've brought you two calendars that the committee has recommended, one for the 15-16 school year and one for the 16-17 school year. We've had an immense amount of feedback from parents and community members. Some of the requests with, that we would look at the Shelby County Schools' calendar. I've reached out to Shelby County Schools and they still don't have a, an draft that they're taking. The board has sent them back a few times with some requests. One of the things that may be definitely different is fall break. One of the options the board asked for was fall break be put with Thanksgiving and fall break be taken down to two days. However, in everything they've presented to me, it looks that our winter Christmas break will remain the same with Shelby County Schools, as well as spring break. And the reason why spring break is being combined with Easter in that calendar for 15-16 is because of the way Easter falls, just that one year. If you notice, in 16-17, we go back to the way we generally have spring break. I've also been in contact with Collierville to make sure we're in line so that we keep those transportation costs down. So, with that, we, with the survey we put out and with the committee's feedback, those are the two calendars we feel would be best for Germantown Schools to consider. Please let me know if you have any other feedback or discussion points you would like us to take on. The next thing I did this week, or my team, we met with the Confucius Institute from the University of Memphis, and that is dealing with the Chinese program. As you know, we have it currently active at Farmington Elementary in the second grade. And we would love to expand that program next year, possibly looking at taking eighth grade and expanding our options for eighth graders in foreign language to maybe being French, Chinese, and Spanish so that they have a choice and they're not only having one option. So, we're looking at that closely in the, in the budget. Finally, my team from the special ed department recognized two staff members at Farmington Elementary through the Council of Exceptional Children. Mr. Zach Prokosky received the award of excellence in special education for an outstanding administrator. And Ann Quinn relieved, received the excellence in special education for outstanding teacher. Ms. Quinn and Ms. Carter are currently at the Tennessee Partners in Education Conference presenting for us in the preschool world. So, that's very exciting. And that should round out my week. Any questions?
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Great job, as always. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manuel, I just had one question on the budget calendar. It sounded like we're going to have one. I know we have a work session in February, and I'm wondering if just, if that's going to be enough time to consider the budget, should we look at adding a work session? I just want to make sure we have enough time to fully consider all the issues.
I, I agree. That may be a necessity for us to add an extra work session in before that business meeting. I'll work with Ms. Subramani to look at some possible dates, and then I'll be in contact with you all to see when we'll be ready for that. Like Ms. Enix said, we're rounding out our portion and trying to come with all the information that you need to make your decisions.
Great. Thanks.
Now, we come to the citizens to be heard. Citizens are asked to complete a card indicating their desire to address the Germantown School Board. If you would give the card to any one of our staff sitting on the front row or Ms. Subramani appear, that would be appreciated. Comments must be constructive. The school board will not entertain any disrespectful comments regarding elected officials. And citizens will be given three minutes to speak. If we could have Lane Roberts, if you'll state your name and address for the minutes. If Marla Reiser would be next.
My name is Lane Roberts and my address is 1799 Percy Place. Thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. I have a sophomore here at Houston. Tonight, I could tell you about my daughter and how exhausted she is on any given day. I could tell you about her hours of homework, demanding honors and AP courses that keep her up. I could tell you about how playing a sport and being in clubs has cost her more sleep. I could even tell you about chronic fatigue that has impacted her growth, her lifestyle, and her personality. I could tell you about how little time she actually has to be a kid because she's too tired. But you've heard all that stuff before. I could tell you that the American Academy of Pediatrics urges all middle and high schools to start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. The same people that got us, us and our pediatricians on everything from immunizations, car seats, sunscreen, sports safety and nutrition, and countless other recommendations that promote the health and well-being of our children, now recommend that teens get eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep per night. To discount and ignore the recommendation of this prestigious organization compromised of some of the most notable physicians in the world is simply incomprehensible. But you've heard all that before, too. I could tell you about the fact that most offices don't begin their workday until 8:00 a.m. or later. Most colleges don't offer a single class before 8:00 a.m. Need to mail a package in Germantown? They don't open until 8:30. Taking your teen for their driver's test? You can't do that until 8:30 either. Need a book from our library? You can't, the doors don't open until 9:30. In fact, most government offices don't open until 8:00 or 9:00 a.m. Yet, the leaders of this county, and now the leaders of this city, demand our kids be in their desks on time every day without fail, ready to learn at 7:00 a.m. How many of you wake up at 5:30 every day? Most of these teens leave before any of you ever even hit the floor or have had your first cup of coffee. They leave in the dark and they stand for the bus in the dark. And yes, you've heard... And yes, you've heard all that before, too. I could tell you about parents who think, "Oh, it's not that bad. My kid did it for years. They turned out just fine. What's the big deal? Our test scores are awesome. It really doesn't impact our kids that much. I like them getting out early. Our sports practices would run so late." Or my personal favorite, "We've always done it this way, so why change it now? What better reason to change it? The whole purpose of becoming a separate school district was to do what is best for our children and our community. Self-determination is a beautiful thing when you choose to actually use it to better your community. If 7:00 a.m. has to stay due to financial situations or ridiculous demands by a terrible bus service, then I encourage you to consider swapping times with the elementary students. That six or seven-year-old that goes to bed at 8:30 wakes up refreshed and ready to go on any given morning. For my daughter to get the recommended amount of sleep she needs, she would have to go to bed at 8:30 p.m. I could also tell you about the natural biorhythms of teens and how they simply are unable to shut down early and sleep like younger siblings. And yes, you've heard all that before, too. What's my point?
Ms. Roberts, your time is up.
I'm going to finish. Thank you. What's my point? Why, what haven't you heard? I don't think you've heard from the ones that really matter, our students. Have any of you heard from our kids? Are you asking them how they feel about starting at 7:00 a.m.? The group that matters the most seems to be the only ones that we haven't bothered to survey. Can we please survey-
We have to, yeah. Survey the students.
-our sixth to 11th graders and ask them how they feel about start times. The results might surprise us. I guess the real danger in asking our students what they want lies in their answers, unless, of course, you really don't want them to be heard. Because listening to our kids might just mean that you need to do something. You need to change something. I don't live in Germantown. I have two children in two different districts. I don't have a vote or a voice in this city, but my daughter should.
Ms. Roberts, we've asked you to stay at three minutes. You're now at four minutes.
Please listen to our kids. They deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Ms. Reiser.
Hey, Marla Reiser.
David Bailey will be next.
Marla Reiser, 2587 Adrian Cove. I'll go short since she went long. I just wanted to say that 7:00 a.m. start times are unhealthy and unsafe, and you promised us last year that if it was not this year, it'd be next year. Please fulfill your promise.
David Bailey, 8431 Drewy Lane. I'm here with everybody else regarding the start times. Don't have as much of an issue with high schoolers myself, but my middle school son, you know, waking up, being, leaving at 6:19 in the morning is very difficult. We manage it by wrestling them all to bed at before 9:00 or 9 o'clock at night, which as you can imagine is a challenge. With all the sports activities and practices, in some cases, you know, gymnasiums, we're short on gymnasiums in town, so practices sometimes are going almost till 9 o'clock at night. Does provide a challenge. So I know with busing, challenges we've had with that this year, it's going to be a challenge to stagger it, but certainly for middle schoolers, you know, it'd be great to have a later start time so they could get a little bit more sleep. High schoolers are starting to get used to a busy lifestyle and heading off to college, so certainly I'd like that to be considered for middle school. Thank you.
Carol Wingfield, Bess Warren will be after Carol.
Hello. Thank you for having me up here to speak about what, how I feel. I'm Carol Wingfield, 2689 Sweet Maple Cove. My story's a little different. I have a daughter who's in a private school currently. We left after fifth grade. We're looking for an exceptional school. I really felt like, once we had our own district, we could have exceptional schools. She has expressed an interest in wanting to return to the Germantown School District, but that was when we thought that start times would be later, and that was a huge consideration. And it may sound crazy that we considered putting all this money toward private school. It was not simply due to start time, but that was a huge portion of it. I attended schools and when I was younger, where I had to be there at 7:15. Difficulty staying awake, falling asleep as soon as we got home from school, then the cycle starts all over again. You cannot expect kids to be able to fall asleep. Then someone told me recently that even some meetings are held at 6:30 a.m. How can you expect 11 and 12 and 13-year-olds to operate that way? As adults, we have difficulty doing that. The school that she has been at is a great school. It starts at 8:00 a.m., but I am going to honor her request to come to, back to the Germantown School District. It starts at 8:00 a.m., and they do not have issues. It is brilliant. If we want to be exceptional, we have to start doing things that make us exceptional. And this is the first place. You've got to listen to the parents. The parents are who support you and can make this an exceptional school. If you do not listen to them, you will not have exceptional schools if you don't hear them. And consider the documentation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bess Warren, 2489 Nether Hall Drive. On June 2nd, 2014, just this summer, I attended a School Board meeting where many residents, including myself, spoke about changing the 7:00 a.m. start times. The Board was very positive and promised that this was a priority for the new school district. Many of you ran on this platform when you were in debates. It was mentioned. But anyway, back to June 2nd. Natalie Williams made a motion to change to two start times, age-appropriate start times as soon as possible. Some Board members seemed hesitant to vote on that motion as it was a little vague in the timeline. Lisa Parker then said to Jason Manuel, and I quote, "We know you're going to do the right thing," referring to age-appropriate start times, as Natalie had just mentioned it in her motion moments earlier, "and if it doesn't get done this year, we know you're going to get it done next year because you promised me." A promise is a promise. Mr. Manuel then repeated, "Promise." The Board put a survey out for the parents about start times, and I know it was about 75% of middle school and high school parents that wanted later start times. The survey wasn't worded the way I would have liked to have seen it worded. It was a little vague in some of the questions, but that was the best I could gather between giving them the option of a 7:30 start or an 8 o'clock start. In the meantime, the American Academy of Pediatrics released their policy statement, which was not just one study, it was a collection and a studying of all the studies. And they came out with what they would recommend for everyone, and it was not starting schools for teenagers before 8:30. Also, in the meantime, the price of gas has gone down dramatically, which has freed up some money in the transportation budget. And at a Board meeting on November 17th, again, many parents, a student, and two psychologists came to speak to the Board asking for later start times. And here we are again, asking you to do what you promised, to move to age-appropriate start times. As Lisa said, a promise is a promise.
Ms. Garday. And then Amy Oof is next.
Hello. Good evening. I really want to say thank you, first of all, to all the Board members for all the work that you put in to make this an excellent school district. I have two students, one in Dogwood Elementary and one in Houston Middle School, and the time gap that they have to face when she went into sixth grade, going from fifth grade, from 9:00 a.m. start time to 7:00 a.m. start time. I mean, we are just struggling with it. It's been over half of a school year. I really hope that you find some room in your transportation budget to make this work for our students in middle school and in high school, because 7:00 a.m. is just too early and not safe at all. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Oof, 2158 East Glen Alden Drive. I have two children at Dogwood and one at HMS, one that will be going to HMS in the fall additionally. First, I have a quote. This is from William Demant, M.D., a professor of psychiatry and behavioral sciences at Stanford School of Medicine. He says, "Sending kids to school at 7:00 a.m. is the equivalent of sending an adult to work at 4:00 a.m. It's almost abusive to them. I want you to imagine for a moment going to work at 4:00 a.m. How functional would you be? Now imagine you go to work at 4:00 a.m. for a week. By Friday, how you doing? How about a month or a semester? This is what we are doing to our children right now. Every day, we are sending them to school at their body's equivalent of 4:00 a.m. That, to me, is abuse. The movement for age-appropriate healthy start times is growing across the nation, from Minnesota to Maryland, from Kentucky to the Dakotas. Parents and health professionals are standing up and saying, 'No more. We are done waking up our children at the predawn hours in ever-more creative ways, watching as they zombie walk out the door, skipping breakfast for 15 more minutes of sleep. We are done with the lost hour, as I call it in my house, immediately after school as my daughter sits in front of the TV trying to recuperate from her day. We are done with putting our kids to bed by 9:00, only to have them lie there for an hour or more and wait for sleep to come. Or she comes downstairs in tears telling me how exhausted she is, but she cannot go to sleep. We are done. There is not a Band-Aid to this. Moving Dogwood to 8:00 doesn't fix this. You have a choice. This movement is coming. You can either be praised as a leader in this area, or you can lag behind. Our children are struggling now for the academic success of your students, for the health and wellness of our babies. Our children, change Houston Middle and Houston High start time away from 7:00 a.m. No more promises. We want action.
Ava Semramatero and Laura Meanwell.
Hello. My name is Ava Semramatero, and I have been a student at Dogwood for six years. Next year, I will be at Houston Middle School. I am here because I cannot imagine starting school at 7:00 a.m. I can barely get up at 7:00 to be at school for 9:00 a.m. I know I can learn better if I'm not half asleep. Kids are healthier, happier, and do better in school when they have more sleep. School start times are a lot bigger deal than you think. It can affect a lot more than just sleep. Thank you.
Tough one to follow. Hi, Laura Meanwell, 8374 Silverthorne Cove. Good evening. I was privileged to speak to you all on June 2nd regarding start times for the 2014-15 school year, as well as on November 17th for the 2015-16 school year. I return again this evening to continue advocating on behalf of exhausted students and parents to plead with you again, third time's a charm, right? To abandon the 7:00 a.m. start for Houston Middle and Houston High Schools for 2015 and beyond. I know you understand the science behind this, as well as the very real anecdotal evidence which has been presented to you by a number of parents. You've seen the start time survey results. You've received the change.org petition containing over 350 signatures. You've had coffee and lunch with us. You've replied to emails and talked with us on the phone, and we thank you. However, we also feel that we are no nearer our desired goal than we were in June of last year. After reviewing the archived footage of the June 2nd meeting, I'm even more frustrated. At that meeting, you as a Board promised to move to less than three bell times and, more importantly, age-appropriate start times. If not in the 2014-15 school year, then the next. We all know that it didn't happen this year, and I'm asking you to please uphold your promise to this community and our children for the 2015-16 school year. According to Mr. Manuel's quote in the commercial appeal recently, "Local control is being responsive to the students that are in our school system and designing programs that are specific to us." To me, this speaks to start times as much as curricula or other facets of education. Mr. Manuel and his staff presented you with four options to moving to two start times, ranging in estimated cost from $231,000 to $484,500. I would suggest that these could be less if the penalty to Collierville is capped at $50,000 as stated in the signed transportation agreement, regardless of intent and continued greater efficiencies are applied to routing and ridership. Additionally, I would suggest that in the current budget, we have the funds to pay for this. For 2014-15, we budgeted $1,124,550 for the Durham contract. Due to route consolidation and reduced ridership, I understand we are on target to spend just over a million dollars for this school year. We budgeted $354,000 for diesel fuel and are currently on track to expend only $141,000. The City of Germantown did supply the GMSD with the equivalent of 15% on property taxes, but left about $95,000 on the table, money that I suggest the GMSD asked for. In my conversation with one of the aldermen, it appears FY15 sales tax revenue is well ahead of budget. The taxpayers, we, voted for a sales tax increase to support the schools. Yet many people have no idea that we're not getting all that revenue. In conclusion, I am asking you, the School Board, to uphold your promise to the children and parents of this district. If not you, then who? If not now, then when? If not for our children and your children, then why? A promise is a promise. Thank you.
Leigh Nowak and Laura Feltwell. Lauren Feltwell.
Leah Nowak, 2215 Duntrith Valley Drive. Thank you for your service to our children in Germantown. I hope you know how much we appreciate your time away from your families to help ours. As much as I hate public speaking, I hate the way the 7:00 a.m. start time affects my daughter. Every night and morning is a struggle that shouldn't have to be. Our children's health is at stake with the 7:00 a.m. start time. The safety of your children is at stake, too, because three times I've almost hit students of these, as they've crossed the street in the dark early morning. I hear a lot of talk about drawing the best and brightest to Germantown Schools. I assure you that we have the best and brightest right here, but they're too tired to show their potential. Have we even considered the private school children who love their 8 o'clock start time? 7:00 a.m. will not draw them back. I know there are constraints on the budget. I read that we need new social studies books. I think that awake, alert students are more important than new materials. My daughter tells me she is glad that she only has social studies first period because most of the students are asleep anyway. I can't even imagine the students who have to perform their best in math at 7:00 a.m. If we're moving to two start times, I would hope that 7:00 and 8:00 are not the time since this does not solve the problem at all. Of the choices provided by Mr. Manuel, the flex time schedule seems to be the best solution. provided by Mr. Manuel, the flex time schedule seems to be the best solution, and I hope it is considered. I also hope someone has kept track of all the missed bus routes that Durham has had in the early mornings. Surely, we're getting refunds for those. And if not, someone in the office isn't doing their job. That money could probably reduce our expense for changing times next year, and I'm guessing there'd be less missed bus routes if school began at a reasonable time. This morning, my sixth grader told me that she hates going to school. I have never heard her say this before. And as a parent and a former teacher, it broke my heart. Kids are hating school because of the time it starts. There is huge support in favor for moving away from the 7:00 AM start times. The parents here are only a small portion who are dedicated to encouraging you to do what's best for our children. The ones who are in favor of keeping the times do so because of convenience. I hope that your conscience will guide you to do what is right, not just what is cheap and convenient. Lastly, changing our start times from 7:00 AM next year would help these board meetings be an hour shorter each month, and then you could go spend more time with your families. Thank you for allowing me to speak again.
Lauren Bowwell. I live at 2144 Allen Court Drive. Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I'd like to follow up on the email I sent each of you yesterday. I know y'all receive a lot of email, and mine was about the commitment we've already made to improve our start times, and that mostly means eliminating 7:00 AM. I'm curious about why this issue has been relegated to the back burner, and I have received some responses from the board, but no explanation. I think it's safe to say that money is a key issue, and maybe it's the key issue. Our total budget, I defer to Laura, she, her numbers were broken down better, but our total transportation budget was a little over $1.5 million. If you subtract what we've projected to pay Durham and our fuel costs, we have over $330,000 remaining. So look here first. We can and we absolutely should look for ways to increase our efficiency and decrease our costs. But this is a tremendous start. That sum is a tremendous start. So I understand that there's other demands on our budget, and this brings up priorities. Where should our money be spent? I've seen ideas, and some of them are good and necessary. But the start time issue is one with a community support, a promise from our board and our superintendent, and that can be implemented almost immediately. We need this taken care of now. And if for some reason you can't keep this commitment, we need an explanation Otherwise, we need to get busy and make it happen.
Good evening. As you can see here tonight, many parents care deeply enough about changing to later start times to show up at board meeting after board meeting in support of this issue. It is commonly known in corporate America that if one person cares enough about an issue to contact a company with a complaint or a suggestion, they represent hundreds of others who feel the same way. Well, we represent hundreds of other parents who are too tired and too busy getting their kids down to bed right now to be here tonight. Recently, there were three armed robberies in Germantown. Personally, I found it laughable that I was disarming my burglar alarm while it was still dark to let my pre-teen out to go to his bus stop. It is not safe. Many people have tried to cloud the clear message of the study on later start times published by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Well, it is not so easy to dismiss the opinions of well-respected doctors and our own community, is it? Dr. Center, a beloved pediatrician at Pediatrics East on Exeter Road in Germantown, has expressed alarm and dismay over our 7:00 AM start time. Dr. David Dia, a renowned child psychologist and Germantown resident, has written letters to Mr. Manuel and Ms. Parker advising them in no uncertain terms that the 7:00 AM start time is detrimental to the psychological well-being of our children. There is no way to confuse or ignore this message. I am hopeful that at the February work session, you, our leaders, will choose one of Mr. Manuel's options for changing start times. Perhaps you can then meet with Collierville leaders, since their residents have also expressed displeasure with the 7:00 AM start time. What we would like to see is a good faith effort to crunch the numbers and find a way to do this. May I suggest you start with correcting the information being bandied about regarding how much we would owe Collierville if we moved to a two-bell system? I'm an attorney. I've read the Pupil Transportation Services Agreement, and according to Section 3.15, any penalty would be capped at $50,000. If changing start times is no longer your priority, please tell us what has displaced it. We are asking that you exhibit the courage to do what is right, what we elected you to do, and what you assured us you were going to do for the 2015-2016 school year. And if I seem furious, it's because I am. I'm missing my son's basketball game right now to be here about this issue again. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Grobart. I live at 1934 Wine Leaf Drive. I was at the June meeting last year, and I spoke then as well about start times. I have a fifth grader. He's going into sixth grade next year. It's a struggle at my house to get him to school at eight. I cannot even begin to imagine the nightmare his life, my life, is going to be. I keep hearing references to Collierville. My answer to that is, I don't live in Collierville. I live in Germantown. I want my child, your children, to have precedence, and I understand that economics plays a part. But what I hear is, economics is more important than my child. I don't like that message. It's not why we elected some of you. I teach my children. A promise made is a promise to be kept. I would like for you to set an example for my child and everybody else's to keep the promise that you made to us in June. Thank you.
That takes us to the end of Citizens to be Heard. And now we go to the consent agenda.
I came in late. May I address the board?
Sure. I've never denied anyone yet, and I don't plan on doing it.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't sign up.
My name is Paul Leonard. I live at 9549 Ash Grove Cove and address the board. Appreciate you being here late. Last meeting I was at, I think you were out in the wee hours looking at icy conditions. And thanks, everybody here. I'm always impressed with the eloquent presentations I hear. I'm very encouraged by the passion. It's good to see familiar faces again. I was thinking that I could stand here and say all this. I'm a psychologist, and I did the survey, and I did all other kinds of things, but the petition. So I could talk about the science, which is kind of like gravity. It's done. It's heard. It's settled. But I won't. I was thinking, listening to this, I think it was 45 years ago, JFK said, actually, he probably said it about 50 years ago. He said, "Let's put somebody on the moon. Let's get it done." I didn't hear anybody say it's too hard, it's too expensive, oh, it'll just be too much of a nuisance. No, we got it done. And I'm really, I'm kind of done. I think I'm a little sleep deprived. I'm not just going to stand here and plead. I'm going to say, "You're all accountable to us, and you need, you need to come through. You need to be transparent with some of the facts I've heard about a $50,000 cap. I've never heard that." That's a serious misleaning of what I heard earlier, which was somewhere around a half-million-dollar penalty to Collierville. That's what I heard before. So now we're hearing $50,000. So I'm saying be transparent, be accountable, do what your constituents want you to do, or give us a really good explanation why, and be prepared for the consequences if you don't come through with your promise. Thank you.
Okay, now we go on to the consent agenda. I have to apologize to everybody. I had eye surgery this week, and I can't see very well. I see real good with this one, but I don't see well with this one, so I keep winking at everybody. And I can't, I can't see at all on the paper, but anyway. The first one is to waive the second reading for revision of policy 6.206. And as soon as I get that out, I'll tell you what that is. The next one is revision of policy 6.206 after one reading. The third one is to waive the second reading for revision of policy 6.2061. That is intra-district open enrollment. Number four is revision of policy 6.2061 after one reading. And the fifth one is miscellaneous budget amendments 31, 32, 33, and 34. These are all on the consent agendas. Any of the board members want to pull them?
Madam Chair, I might want to pull number five, the budget amendments, but maybe not. I only just wanted to ask a question about Budget Amendment 34, so I don't necessarily...
I wanted to ask a question about Budget Amendment 34. I don't know if that means that I should pull it from the consent agenda or just ask my question. The Budget Amendment 34 is the incremental BEP funding that the state of Tennessee has notified us we will receive. And it's my understanding, so I'm saying this like I know it, and Ms. Enix, I'd like to confirm if I have it right or not, that increment in BEP funding is a result of our enrollment being larger than the numbers that the state used when they originally estimated our BEP. And that happened because we've never existed before. We're a brand-new school district. Pardon. So there's not quite a million dollars in Budget Amendment 34. And my question was, how much of that million dollars is going towards expenditures that we expect to be recurring, recurring that we'll spend every year? And how much of that $990-something thousand is budget items that might be one-time expenditures?
And the second part of that question is, the $990,000, we would expect that to recur as long as our enrollment stayed at the $5,700 level.
Yeah, we had previously discussed this in the work session meeting. The ones that I think are recurring are the things that we didn't account for. So for example, when an employee goes, is injured on the job and goes and receives, goes to the doctor, we didn't account for paying that part of their premium when they go to the doctor, so that that was something that we did not budget for. So that was one of the things that was included there. I'm sure there's some others. The cafeteria fund was a one-time expense. The technology fund was a one-time expense to get ready for the state testing and the increases that we have for the miss test. There were very few of those that were recurring, but Ms. Enix can tell you the ones, the rest of the ones.
Okay. I believe your question was, which are going to be recurring, and what are more warranty-type expenses for this money, correct?
Yeah, but I'd really like to, here is, X dollars is one time.
Okay. I don't have my calculator with me, my tinky. But in the budget amendment that you're looking at, the regular instruction equipment and the other capital outlay, $390,000 is not going to be recurring every year. It will recur for about three years while we upgrade the IT infrastructure at all of our schools in order for students to be able to bring devices to school to use for textbooks instead of having to carry the textbooks back and forth from home to school every day, which is another one of those medical things. The $272,000 that we've allocated to other capital outlay is to help upgrade the infrastructure at our schools. We currently have one school who has quite a few classrooms with no heat throughout the day. This will help to get those HVAC units replaced, because the units that are there, we can no longer buy replacement parts for. So the entire units are going to have to be replaced for the whole school. The other smaller expenditures will be recurring expenditures. Those are increases in basic, everyday functional expenses throughout school, with the exception of the cafeteria. I'm sure you looked at the financial reports and noticed that the number that's on here has gone up about $35,000. We're hoping that with the changes that we instituted in January, that we will cut that loss off, and there will not be much further loss. But I can go ahead and tell you, we're going to lose some because of the shared service cost. We just can't make our cafeterias turn a profit to cover the cost to run the cafeterias. Parents are just not letting their kids eat there. They're sending them to school with other, other food options. So for at least this year, I do expect to see that cost go up a little more. But for next year, we have yet to make a decision on what we're going to do with the cafeterias. So if we continue to run them next year the way we're running them this year, there will be an additional out-of-pocket expense for them. It just depends on if we keep them operational or outsource or shut them down completely.
Let me try and say that back.
Okay.
The computer expenditure is every three years.
Well, hopefully, once we get, this is just an initial upgrade, because the IT infrastructure at our schools has been neglected for so long. It's just, it's not going to support the size of the devices that we need.
Yes. If I said it's $130,000 per year, it's free money, every three years, it's used every year.
Yeah, let's let Mr. Pierce answer the technology questions.
Sorry, I needed to address that. That's a little bit incorrect. That, that figure is actually for computer carts, for, to be used for online testing. In the legacy district, Shelby County and the merged district, traditionally, those districts provided each school with the choice of either a cart or a lab at the end of the school year, and that has not been done. That was not done the year of pre-merger or the year that we were merged. So we are effectively two years behind in upgrading student computers, and that's what that figure is for, is to get us back on track for that.
And that is, that is not a recurring cost.
Right. It's just a one-time fee.
And the issue for us too is, we also have increased state requirements for testing. So that was part of that issue that we discussed with...
Hopefully, yes. That's, that's our goal. We haven't seen how it's going to affect. We instituted some changes in January, but we should see some decreases, yes, significant decreases.
And I thought it was, there was something, there's $400,000, because these are one-time expenses, which means we will help this way.
Yes, that's our objective.
Yes.
Now we can, will that be okay?
I move to accept the consent agenda items, the five items on the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that the reason we're waiving the second reading on our policies, which is not something we do, it's not, the reason we're waiving it is because we need to get these tweaks into place for the early enrollment that's going to start tomorrow. So that's why we're waiving the second reading.
And to add to Mr. Diya, all we're changing in the enrollment policy effectively is adding the category of Leadership Academy at a... is adding the category of Leadership Academy at a similar priority to Honors Academy. That is the principal change that's being done in this consent.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Deah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we come to the agenda item auditor selection for the Student Activity Fund.
I'll do a brief introduction, but Autumn can do a better job than I can. One of the things that we strive for is transparency, especially with our budget procedures and how we're spending the money in our schools. So we do an external audit and we hire a firm to do that. The city of Germantown is using Watkins-Uberall, and for convenience sake, because we are one of the funds that falls under the city, we're recommending choosing them also for that, to audit our account. So Ms. Enix can talk about some of their experience because they have a wealth of experience in this field. We met with them today and I was very pleased with what we heard. And Autumn, I don't know if you want to talk briefly about their history?
Well, Watkins-Uberall has audited the city of Germantown and many other municipalities in Shelby County for a number of years. They have also audited the legacy Shelby County schools, the legacy Memphis City schools, and the merged district. So they have a lot of experience with auditing the school activity funds. I know initially, several months ago, we were discussing putting out an RFP for these services when we got to looking at it, time constraints and just putting together, looking at the actual cost, we didn't think it was going to be worthwhile to take the time to go through the RFP process. Watkins-Uberall already audits the city of Germantown, so the fact that they would not have to collaborate with another auditor in order to include the activity funds in the financial statements with the city, it would save some time and costs, provide an efficiency for audit purposes there as well. And Mr. Trey Watkins with Watkins-Uberall and Danielle Moore are both here if you have any questions for them regarding their services or qualifications.
So I know we had talked at one point about an RFP, and certainly there's good reason why we would use the same auditor as the city. Do we have assurances that we're being charged a rate that we would expect to be competitive if we went out with an RFP?
I will let Trey answer that question.
Yes, you can.
That's great. Do you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
We are in the process of putting that bid together so that Autumn and Jason can take a look at it. I'm sure they'll share that with you. But we would be more than happy to make sure y'all understand the cost that's involved on the front end. We do do pretty much every municipality in the county except for Collierville, so we will expect to be competitive with all of them, quite frankly, because they all talk amongst each other, so I'm pretty certain they'll compare notes.
And I'm sure you want to desire to have repeat business, so...
That's exactly right.
Maybe even do a little better this year to get the business next year.
That's exactly right.
Order of magnificence, I don't know whether it's D, are we talking about this as a student activity fund? Would you order magnificence?
It's very hard for me to quote that right now just because I haven't seen the information at this point.
I can tell you that this was something that we budgeted for and that we approved in our budget, and I think that Ms. Enix probably did a fair job of estimating what the cost would be for our district. If it was something that was above and beyond what we had budgeted for with the board, of course, we would come to you with a budget amendment in that case. So my expectation that it's gonna be what we budgeted.
My guess is it will be within your expectations. That would be my guess.
So does anybody know what that number was that's in the budget?
What do you remember?
15,000? 15,000?
I was gonna say 15.
The order of magnificence on what it was?
Okay. That's right.
What exactly is entailed in auditing these student activity funds? I mean, and I'm not looking for, I don't want the audit procedures, I'm just talking about what funds are we auditing?
Sure, I can talk about, from my experience as a principal, what this looked like. One of the things that we want to do is make sure that we are following all the procedures so that there isn't any chance for individuals in the district to misappropriate funds, that we are counting for everything accurately. So an example is, they're looking for when deposits are made to the banks in relation to when events occurred at the school. They're looking for the fact that we have sponsors for funds who have signed off on a report that we take a daily cash receipt that they have collected, and that the principals have then, you have two signatures on checks. They're looking at all those details of how these funds work.
It's more of a compliance type...
Yeah, so that was my question. So like football, I know, has a booster club. Is that part of the audit?
No, that, for us, the booster club is not a school account. That's a separate 503(c). However, the principal does have supervision. We do ask for those reports to be turned into the school, but we're talking about, for example, club accounts.
Beta Club, Beta Club.
So accounts that are actually at the school location and that we are in charge of.
They all have fundraisers, they all have trips, so money is collected through all of them. So it could be HOZA, it could be, I mean, any club.
But sports activity funds are not included in this, is that what I'm hearing?
Those sports activities funds are included that are school funds, but you said the football boosters, booster club accounts are separate entities, they are separate organizations.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I move to approve the engagement of Watkins-Uberall, the current auditors of the city of Germantown, to audit the student activity funds of the Germantown Municipal School District. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Deah?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we come to calendar recommendations. Teresa Price?
I believe that Ms. Subramani gave you the two recommendation, recommended calendars that the committee is bringing forth. One is for the 2015-16 school year, one is for the 2016-17 school year. Questions?
So I know you've gotten a lot of feedback. I was wondering if you could summarize some of the significant feedback that you've gotten for us to consider. Was there anything that you noticed over and over again, people expressed as either something they liked or disliked about the calendars?
When, at the work session, you all expressed some wonderful ideas, we took that and I compiled that into a list and we went through each of those ideas and how it affected the calendar. We also had, I would say, approximately 25 emails surrounding different issues. The one this week that's come up the most was the Shelby County Schools issue and trying to mirror their calendar as much as possible. Beyond that, we tried to get a little bit creative, as I said, with fall, or spring break and trading that, and there was an overwhelming outpouring of, "Please don't do that." So we backed off that and this is where we've ended up. Probably the most feedback I got and the most highly requested item was that we don't allow teachers to come back before August 1st. So in both calendars, we were able to achieve that.
Is this on? I would just like to applaud the work that you did and the committees did. Are we the first municipality to approve a calendar?
I didn't...
Are we the first?
We are not the first to approve calendar. I believe Millington has already approved as well as Arlington. I don't believe Bartlett or Collierville have yet.
Well, I just, I mean, I appreciate us kind of jumping out, doing two years ahead. It allows people to plan. And I just really applaud your efforts of listening to the teachers and the community and engaging everyone. You know, that's something that we did, starting back with our superintendent search, and it carries on today, and I just want to applaud that because I think it's just something that really helps us to stand out, and I just wanted to thank you for that. Nice job.
And Mr. Deah, that was probably another one of the most requested items, was just to get them out as soon as possible, and probably the most positive feedback is that we're doing two years at a time.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard that from folks as well. One of the things we talked about at the work session, I think, was sharing these with principals at the school and getting their feedback. Have we gotten principal feedback? Are they comfortable? Does this work within their academic expectations for the schools?
We had assistant principals, teachers, parents, principals, I'm gonna say, hit as many areas as we possibly could on the committee, and they were charged to go back to their schools, pass out the calendars, get feedback, and bring that back to the second committee session. We also put out that survey just on checking on the spring break issue.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the proposed calendars for the 2015-2016 and 2016-2017 school years.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Deah?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the announcements, the next work session will be February the 11th at 6:00 PM at the Germantown Municipal School Board. The next business meeting will be February the 23rd at Houston Middle School at 6:30. March 4th, we'll have a work session at 6:00 PM, and March the 23rd, we'll have our business meeting at Riverdale at 6:30. Is there any other business to come before the board?
I'd just like to say thank you for the goody baskets. I know the PTA put together for us and for all the appreciation. And thanks to everyone who came out tonight to express your viewpoints. It's part of what makes our school district great, is the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.